Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Richland Two School Board Trustees Meeting to order. And we apologize for being a little late. We had an extended executive session. And now we're here in our open session. Thank you all for being here. At this time, we will stand for an inspirational moment and the Pledge of Allegiance. You are my shepherd. I do not need a thing. You've bedded me down in lush meadows. You find me quiet pools to drink from. True to your word, you let me catch my breath and send me in the right direction. Even when the way goes through Death Valley, I am not afraid when you walk at my side. Your trusted shepherd's crook makes me feel secure. You serve me a six-course dinner right in front of my enemies. You revive my drooping head. My cup brims with blessing. Your beauty and love chase after me every day of my life. I am back home in your house for the rest of my life. I'd like to ask you to observe a moment of silence for one of our students who lost his life not too very long ago. Also for the girls of Nigeria who've been kidnapped by the Burhah. And certainly for the veterans who paid the supreme sacrifice for all of us to enjoy freedom. Moment of silence.
California that was hit by the student who took his own life out.
Thank you very much.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. James Mann. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moves.
Move by Ms. Anderson is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we pull out the addendum to the ratification of personnel from the consent agenda.
Approve the agenda with the pullout of the ratification. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr... Motion by Mr. Manning. Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? With the exception of the ratification addendum being pulled out, we are now ready... we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a comment. Should I make that after the vote?
Yeah, we're gonna... we're gonna do the addendum, and that's when you will.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, motion passes six one. Thank you very much. Next.
Mr. Chair, we were presented with an addendum.
Yes.
And I move that we approve the addendum presented to the Board.
Dr. Fleming has moved to approve the addendum personnel presented to the Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Further discussion? Dr. Elkins.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a comment because I felt like the vote would go this way tonight. So if you'll just bear with me as I read my statement, because I came prepared tonight because I figured the vote would go that way. For those of sitting out there, please bear with me as I share my thoughts and my feelings with you all this evening. As a member of Richland Two School Board, I am deeply concerned with the manner in which the superintendent is making district-level and principal appointments. I certainly support and celebrate decisions that reflect administrative qualifications and experience. However, position appointments ought not to be made so hastily to accommodate friends or to appease the disgruntled. Within just a few months of Dr. Hamm's interim superintendency, one of her first questionable decisions included a new organizational chart to accommodate her close friends. This is just one example of a hasty decision-making progress. The findings of the Evergreen Study indicated that the district was top-heavy. However, Dr. Hamm chose to ignore those findings by creating two new associate superintendent positions to accommodate one of her friends. Other districts within similar populations have very dissimilar organizational charts to what Richland Two proposed and approved. This data was shared in executive sessions with my fellow Board members. There is also cause for concern with the rationale of when and where Black principals are placed.
Chair, I really found that out of order. I really found that statement out of order.
What's this got to do with the motion, Mr. Chair?
Will you allow me the opportunity to share my thoughts as I do with you guys?
Not at this time.
Chair's calling order. I think... Chair's calling order. I think, Ms. Elkins-Johnson, the question on the table is the motion specifically for this one... with these four... these two positions.
I understand what the motion is, but I'm sharing my thoughts because, again, we do work for the constituents, and it is their opportunity to hear how I feel about the motion and why I'm not supporting the motion. So if you guys will show me enough respect, as I do with you all when you share your thoughts, and allow me to continue, please.
I've already heard your thoughts.
Well, I would like to continue. Just as it is unacceptable to move the Confederate flag that so many citizens fight insulting from the top of the state Capitol to the front state line to a less prominent place.
Dr. Elkins-Johnson.
So is the shifting of African-American principals under the premise of promotion.
Dr. Elkins-Johnson, I would ask that you refrain from that statement that you're reading because it's not germane to the vote tonight. I can certainly allow you...
This statement represents my vote as to no, and the constituents need to understand why I'm supporting no.
I understand, Dr. Johnson, but the statement you're reading has to do with other issues that you're concerned about and not the specific vote tonight on the table. There's a motion and a second and a vote on the table to respond to the specific recommendation that's being made as an addendum. Comments related to that specific vote on the table is all that the Chair can allow at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If anyone have any questions why I made my decision not to support two associate superintendents, please feel free to give me a call or to see me, and I'll be more than happy to share my thoughts with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins-Johnson.
And let me just end with one quote, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. I would like to give my quote of Thomas Jefferson. "As I grow older, I pay less attention to what people say. I just watch what they do." So I hope you guys are watching what we do.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins-Johnson.
More so than what we say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Anderson?
I'm not there.
Okay, okay.
Just one.
Dr. Fleming?
This is... this is part of an organization that required no increase in, quote, "the top area." There was no new positions created. There were just some reorganizations of existing positions. So that's not... that's where we are.
Again, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none. We're ready to vote. Motion passes six one. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is special recognition. Dr. Hamm.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and staff, and special guests. It's the end of the year, which means this room is filled because we have many wonderful awards to recognize tonight. And Vice Chair James Mann is going to help in passing out the certificates. Special honorees, please come forward as I call your name. We'll start with Jeffrey Gregory from Spring Valley High School, and he will come up with his principal, Dr. Baron Davis. Mr. Gregory was one of the finalists in the state of South Carolina for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. These are the nation's highest honors for teachers of mathematics and science, and to be a finalist is quite an accomplishment. The winners will be announced later this year, and we offer our congratulations and good luck to Mr. Gregory and wish him and thank him for being a leader in mathematics and science education. Congratulations. Okay, Richland Two is home of another finalist for a national award. Would Terry Butt, who was a past District Teacher of the Year, as well as a teacher at Bridge Creek Elementary, and her principal, Kristen Eubanks, please come forward?
Terry was selected by the South Carolina Education Association as South Carolina's nominee for the National Education Association Foundation Award for Teaching Excellence. This prestigious award recognizes and promotes excellence in teaching and advocacy for the profession. If she is selected in the top five, Bridge Creek will receive a monetary award. So extra good luck to you, Terry. Congratulations.
We now want to bring up Westwood High School student Patricia Plone and her principal, Ralph Schmidt. Patricia won first place in the National History Day State Level Competition. She won in the senior division in historical paper category. And here is the topic of her paper, which is quite impressive. "The Rights and Responsibilities of American Heirs in Transatlantic Marriages During the Gilded Age." Wow. She will now be going on to the national competition held in Maryland. Congratulations and good luck, Patricia. Okay, now we want to bring up Blythewood Middle School teacher Jody Zeiss and her principal, Brenda Hafner. Jody received an environmental award along with one of her students who could not be here tonight. Ms. Zeiss won a National Teaching Award for her work with Igniting Creative Energy, a national activity that encourages students to be innovative in regards to taking care of the environment. Two of Ms. Zeiss's classes researched energy and water conservation and how it relates to fossil fuels and changes on Earth over time. Eighth-grade student Tess Torek, who couldn't be here, won first place in the Igniting Creative Energy Student Challenge. She was inspired as she researched for this project once she realized just how much energy and water people use and waste each day. Thank you, Ms. Zeiss, for caring about our environment and teaching the same to our students, and congratulations. Richland Northeast High School had an excellent showing at the South Carolina Scholastic Press Association. First, we'll call up the staff of the Cavalier Newspaper, along with their principal Sabrina Suber and their advisor, Nina Brooke. The Cavalier Newspaper won the Palmetto Award, which is basically the equivalent of the 3A state title in school newspapers. Carrie Nelson and Wesley Skidmore are the editors-in-chief, and they are also joined by reporters Haley LaRanger, Rose Needle, and Brian Washington. Joining this group are two broadcast journalist students... journalists Evelyn Ann Barokie and Zach Witchley. At the same conference, the Press Association Conference, they won first place for their public service announcement highlighting arts programs at Richland Northeast. Evelyn also won first place for reporting. Her entry was a video news package concerning the homeless in Columbia. I am certain these students have bright futures as journalists. Join me in congratulating them. Congratulations. We have several awards from Dent Middle School, so Principal David Basile, you can start making your way up front. And we're going to ask the We the People State Championship Team to please come forward, along with Advisor Mark Turner. The primary goal of We the People competition is to promote civic competence and responsibility among the nation's elementary and secondary students. Each student must know the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and be able to participate in mock congressional hearings. All of the team members' names are on the screen, but tonight we have Anthony Androlakis, Traiana Benjamin, and Kate Ellis. Congratulations. All right. Dr. Basile, you can stay right there. And we're going to ask Mr. Tim Hicks to come forward. Dent Middle School was named the 2014 Law Related Education Middle School of the Year, and Mr. Hicks was named the 2014 Law Related Education Middle School Teacher of the Year. Both awards are awarded by the South Carolina Bar Law Related Education Division. Dent was recognized largely in part because of its successful mock trial and We the People programs. Mr. Hicks, who is the advisor to the mock trial team, was selected because of his ability to communicate a deep respect for the law to a far-reaching group of students. He has worked with the middle school mock trial program for 15 years, and his teams consistently compete well at the regional competitions and have advanced to state level numerous times. This award comes with nice cash prizes for Mr. Hicks and Dent Middle School. Congratulations. Now, we will honor students with outstanding physical ability. First, let me call up Zakori Ross from Ridgeview High School, his coach, Major Gene England, and principal Brenda McFoxworth. Zakori is part of Ridgeview's JROTC rifle team called the Blazer Rangers. He has been designated as a National Distinguished Expert Shooter, a group of very selected and distinguished air rifle marksmen. It normally takes marksmen four or more years to earn this title. Zakori did it in three. Since 2001, more than 100,000 marksmen have competed for this designation, but only 769 have earned it. Congratulations, Zakori. Ms. McFoxworth, you can stay up here, and I probably need to do this next recognition really fast, because they are really fast. It is the fastest 1,600-meter girls relay team in the history of South Carolina. With Janida Ellisgar, who was actually an eighth grader, Amara Cooks, Faith Mackey, and Arlisha Bush, along with Amber Haver, please come forward. And athletic director David Gordon is coming with them as well. This team smashed a record set back in 1993 for the four-by-four relay team. They set a goal, kept focused, and succeeded quickly. They will now head on to the national competition next month. Congratulations. We've honored him before, but we had to bring back Spring Valley High School's star football player for more recognition. Linebacker Christian Miller, and if his coaches with us, and Dr. Baron Davis, do you want to come on back up with him? He won the prestigious 2014 South Carolina Chapter of the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame Scholar-Athlete Award. He was selected for Academic Achievement, Athletic Accomplishments, and Community Leadership. His name will be placed inside the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame, and we can all take a trip to see it because it's moving from Indiana to Atlanta this summer. Christian will now move on to the national level and compete for the national award. He leaves to start his football career at Alabama next week, and we will be cheering him on. And somebody else wrote this in my script that says, "Except maybe when he's playing South Carolina schools." No. I'll cheer you all. Roll tide. Congratulations. We have very many talented artists in the audience tonight. We'll start with one of our talented art teachers. Would Katherine Campbell, our lead art teacher, please come forward for a special presentation? No problem. The Columbia Museum of Art MacArthur Goodwin Award is being presented to Katherine tonight for Excellence in Visual Arts Education. The award honors individuals who foster progress in visual arts education and creates a greater awareness of the arts resources such as museums and art centers within South Carolina. Congratulations and thank you for all you do. Okay, so now, while we have artwork, as y'all seen, displayed, and so we are going to recognize students whose artwork was considered and is going to be a part of the superintendent's collection. First, we'll recognize the runners-up, and we're going to ask them, as I call their name, to just stand at their seat and remain standing while I call the whole group out, and then we will congratulate them at one time. So these are the students who entered their art for their school in the competition to be part of the superintendent's art collection. From Bookman Road Elementary, Jeremy Bakker with his teacher, Sean LaFaye. From Bridge Creek Elementary, Eden Zikovic with teacher Jason Kendall. From Catawba Trail Elementary, Rosalina Rodriguez, and her teacher is Nicole Lucky. For the Center for Achievement, Austin Mathbauer with teacher Olivia Schultz. Center for Inquiry, Liam Sexton, and his teacher is Becky Watkins. Center for Knowledge, student Jessica Wigley with teacher Molly Drews. Condor Elementary, Jasmine Pack, teachers Ortega, Missouri. Forest Lake Elementary, Micaiah Kamibashi and her teacher is Heather Hansberry. Keels Elementary, Kenya Ruff with teacher Jackson Elliott. Killian Elementary, Kelly Grant and teacher Nancy Marine. Lake Carolina Elementary, student Macy Collins with teacher Olivia Schultz. Langford Elementary, Fiona Ritter, teacher Michelle Bridges. Nelson Elementary, Allison Delaney, teacher Robin Hurst. North Springs Elementary, Michaela Albany, taught by Katie Oliver. Polo Road Elementary, Dylan Wells, taught by Brandy Floyd. Pontiac Elementary, Sarah Catherine Weiss, teacher is Kelly Smith. Rice Creek Elementary, Alana Cato, teacher Joan Nguyen. Roundtop Elementary, student Joshua Hanson, teacher Ladonna Dixon. Sandlapper Elementary, Jamila Carmona, teacher Sam Pouncy. Windsor Elementary, Francesca Corales, teacher Kristen Holsey. Blythewood Middle, Jessica Dimmerich, teacher Jessica Burgess. Muller Road Middle, Madeline Gilstrip, teacher John Walker. EL Wright Middle, Daisy Spiva, teacher Kaitlin Zimmerman. Westwood High School, Grayson Woodham, with teacher Bill Hicks. Please join me in congratulating these very talented artists. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, now on to our finalists. Dr. Hamm, we're going to ask you to come forward because these students want to present their artwork to you to be part of the collection. And students, you will come forward with your artwork as I call your name. From Bethel Hanbury Elementary, Hannah Cross, whose teacher is Elise Peak. Dent Middle, artist is Madison Stone, teacher Katherine Campbell. From Kelly Mill Middle, artist Christina Trifonova, teacher Lauren Beck. Longleaf Middle, artist Amari Reynolds, teacher Patricia McCormick. Summit Parkway Middle, Meredith Ousboldyston with teacher Talbert Glover. Blythewood High School, Justin Kiner is the artist and teacher Gina Taylor. From Richland Northeast High, artist Shi Jin, and teacher is Mary Katherine Newman. Ridgeview High, artist Brittany Morrison, teacher Chris Nostrant. And I would like to say that Brittany is my goddaughter, so I'm excited to see that. Thank you, Brittany. And Spring Valley High School, Madison Pickrell is the artist and teacher Josh Drews. Thank you to all our many talented artists. Please join me in giving them one more round of applause. Family and friends that are here tonight, I know several of you jumped up and tried to get a photograph. I will tell you that in probably maybe next week, but we will post our photographs from our board meeting on our Flickr page, and you can access that from our website. You just click on the Flickr logo on the bottom, and then all these pictures will be there, and you'll be able to download ones of your talented students. That concludes our recognitions tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. And before you leave, folks, if you would, I'd like to have a camera go back in the back, and I'd like to get all of those who were running up tonight. If you get in a group, we'd like to get a group photograph of you, because even though you may not have presented your picture to the superintendent, you have excellent work, and we want to make sure we capture that. So if all are running up, just give them a round of applause as well. We want to thank you very much for the tremendous talent the students are displaying. Thank the students and their parents for the excellent work that they've, they have demonstrated. Thank all of you for being here again on tonight. Those who are in the rear, you can certainly move forward and come closer if you will. Again, those that are in the rear would like to move up closer, please feel free to do so. We're going to continue our board meeting at this time. We have a couple of, a couple of special guests here on tonight, and before we continue our agenda, I wanted to recognize those special guests that are here. I'm sure there are many others, all are very special, but two that I wanted to single out on tonight. We're certainly happy to have with us Mr. Scott Price, who's our, who's the legal counsel for the South Carolina School Boards Association. So welcome him. And another special guest, at least to me, is a young lady who's here tonight who is my daughter. She's a proud graduate of Ridgefield High School and a proud graduate of Clemson University, and now works for Millican Corporation in Greenville, South Carolina. Stand up, Cass. My daughter Cass Jackson. And she did not know I was going to do that. I'm glad to have her. She asked, Dad, what, you know, what do you do at the school board meeting? I said, come tonight and see. So thank you for being here, baby. Next on our agenda is Student Focus. Dr. Hamm?
Yes. Tonight, we're going to recognize Marshall Lynn Franklin and the students here at Polo Road Elementary School. Good evening. I'm sure that you have heard or seen in the media the recent numbers about children and autism, and that number is one in 68 children are affected by an autism spectrum disorder. And Polo Road just happens to be home to four self-contained classes for students with autism. And in developing and implementing strategies for those students, we've come to the realization that some of those strategies are also beneficial to general ed students as they address social Two of the strategies that we have found to be duly beneficial to both students who have autism and those who don't are peer buddies and social thinking. These two strategies address social deficits that are often perceived as behavior issues, but in fact are a manifestation of a deficiency in social skills. I am joined this evening by a fantastic team. We have two of our students, Hannah Reyes and Drew Stewart, along with Drew's mom, Mrs. Alberta Stewart, and they're going to come in just a second and share their reflections about our peer buddies. And I also have our two speech language pathologists, Ms. Megan Bondi and Ms. Abby Hobbit, and they're going to speak specifically about social thinking. And supporting us are some classroom teachers, Mr. Daniel Murphy, who's one of our autism teachers, Nicole Perry, who's a kindergarten teacher, as well as our school psychologist specifically for our classes for students with autism, Ms. Kelly Snipes. So as Hannah and Mrs. Stewart and Drew make their way here, I want to share with you some of the outcomes that we've experienced in the past few years, including an increase in pro-social behavior among our students, a 40% reduction in discipline issues, an increase in academic achievement. This year Polo Road received its first Palmetto Gold Award for overall academic performance, as well as our first Excellent Growth Rating. And we've also have over 90% of our students' parents and teachers satisfied with the school. And so on the bottom of the screen there, there are a number of factors to which we accredit those successes and those outcomes, and two of them would be our peer buddies and social thinkers. We want to specifically speak to those this evening. And so we'll start with Hannah.
My name is Hannah Reyes and I'm a peer buddy for one of my classmates who has autism. His name is Drew. He and I sit next to each other in class and we, and when he's stuck on a question, I help him. Sometimes I notice Drew needs help and I just offer it. Other times Drew asks me for help. There are times when Drew gets frustrated because there's just a lot of things going around us. I help him cope by first telling him to calm down, then I ask, what's the matter? Drew tells me what's bothering him and I help him out. I like being a peer buddy because it helps me learn about what people with autism are like and how they learn. Being a peer buddy requires me to be responsible and show compassion. Drew and I started out as peer buddies, now we're great friends.
Does Hannah help you?
Yes.
What does she do?
She's done a good job.
She's done a good job.
Have, have a nest?
What do you want to say?
I want to say hello.
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 My name is Drew, and here's my friend Hannah. If she was getting frustrated because she was very, very upset, and she was very, very, kind of very nice, because she was very nice.
Okay, that's good. That's good. Thank you. Say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I am a former employee of Richland School District for one year, and I taught sixth grade. And as a teacher, I love the concept of having the typical children assist those with special needs. I think it develops future citizens that will be understanding of the general population. So I love Polo Road. I love those people over there who have helped him become the young man that he is becoming. Thank you for your support.
Very moving and touching demonstration of not only collaborative, but actual genuine kindness and love.
I'm Abby Hobbit. I'm a speech pathologist at Polo Road.
This is Megan Bondi. I'm also a speech pathologist there. We wanted to talk a little bit about social thinking. It's a framework with the goal of helping students figure out what the social rules are and how to adapt in different social situations. We've found that it really has helped teachers and parents understand how social deficits not only impact peer relationships, but also academics, written expression, reading comprehension, learning as a part of the group. We began working with social thinking with our speech students who had social communication goals in small group, and then we wanted to find a way that we could branch out and reach the regular education classrooms and teachers. So we adjusted our service model as a way to push out throughout the school environment. And this allowed us to collaborate with regular ed teachers as well as kind of get a common base for concepts and vocabulary. And we've found that having teachers on board has really facilitated the idea that these kids are not just behavior problems, they really have a deficit in social thinking. And it's also allowed us to address RTI for these social skills and these behavior needs throughout modeling or consultation with teachers and just increased awareness across the school.
Some of the vocabulary that is associated with this framework and is in the books is expected and unexpected. So you might hear me in a classroom teaching students, we're going to pair up in partners. If somebody comes up to you and says, do you want to be my partner? It's expected to say yes and act like you're excited, even if you really wanted to be partners with someone else. And it would be unexpected to say no, thank you. We talk about good thoughts versus uncomfortable thoughts. So not just what to do, but what will the people think and how will the people feel based on what you do, so that we're not just teaching social skills individually, but the social thinking that can be applied to any situation, since it's impossible to teach the social skills for every possible situation that may come up. We talk about whole body listening, and so you'll hear teachers saying, listen with your eyes, listen with your hands, listen with your feet, keep your brain in the group and keep your body in the group. And so instead of saying, come to the carpet, they'll say, body in the group, and the kids figure it out for themselves where to go. Or I like how your brain was in the group, we're all thinking about math and you made a comment about math. Thinking with your eyes, I came into here and maybe I've never been to a board meeting, but I can think with my eyes to look for clues to figure out what to do and follow everybody else. Smart and wacky guesses, so we make a smart guess about what we should do in different situations. And so now that we have this common vocabulary in our school and we hear teachers using it throughout the day, it really helps our students who have been working on their social smarts in speech or in their autism classes, and then it's helping all of the kids in the regular ed classes and other kids who struggle with social deficits as well.
That concludes our presentation portion. So these ladies, as well as the rest of our support team, are here to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Marshall Frank. Any questions, comments from the board? Again, how many students do you, sir?
In our autism classes, we have a total of 40 students within the four classes, but then we also have students who participate in general ed classes, but they still have an autism diagnosis, but most of their day is spent in general ed.
You said safe for self-contained, I was just wondering how much interaction we were having.
Dr., Ms., yes, Ms. Anderson. Yeah, but I'll wait till after you.
That was one of the questions, Mr. Dr. Flimman asked. How many teachers do you have per, what's the ratio is what I'm asking?
Teachers for the students with autism, there are about eight, nine students in each of the four self-contained classes, and then other students are served through a resource model where they may go to resource for so many periods a day, depending on how many minutes are stipulated by their IEP, as well as students who receive speech services.
And you do have enough teachers assistants?
Right. Each of our self-contained classes have two teaching assistants, and we have one class that has three teaching assistants.
So you feel that you have adequate staff for all of those self-contains?
Yes. But just keep in mind that our, the statistic this year is one in 68 children. Two years ago was one in 88, so as that number continues to grow, then there will be an increased need for more people to serve those students.
That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Question, as the, in the state of South Carolina, number of kids who've been diagnosed with autism continues to go up, and state funding has continued to decline, how do you manage it in terms of a budget from a budgetary standpoint, funding wise?
Right. And of course, we have the luxury of having district level folks that ensures that our needs are met at the school level. So at the school level, we really don't do a lot of budgetary concerns in terms of personnel for programs. We take care of a lot of the professional development, so that budgeting for personnel really comes from the district level.
So is that a question to you, Ms. Mulder, or you, Dr. Molly, in terms of the district's contribution with the declining? I know that state funding for autism has significantly drastically been reduced. How have we covered that shortfall is really the question.
We've been very fortunate in being able to provide the services that our students need. So with the help of Katania Davis, our executive director, and her staff, we keep a close tab on, on what's going on and how many personnel they need.
So they monitor the caseloads that each of the teachers have to ensure that the, we have adequate staff to support the, the need for the children.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public participation session. Not received any requests from the audience to comment, to address the board. However, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak to the board, you can feel free to do so at this time. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our voting on executive session items. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning.
On our student appeals, I'd like to make the motion that student number one attend Blythewood Academy. Student number two, back to their home school with no, no walk for graduation. Student number three, refer to the IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Student number four, Blythewood Academy. Student number five, refer to the IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Student number six, back to their home school with strict probation until the end of the Student number seven, back to their home school. And student number eight, return to Blythewood Academy with strict probation.
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Brill. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Back to the home school with no, no right to, to walk for graduation.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Do you need me to repeat one? Okay. That, that's fine. Student five was referred to the IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Blythewood Academy. That's right. You want me to run back through them real quick? No, that's fine. So number one should be Blythewood Academy. Number two is back to the home school, no graduation. Number three, refer to the IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Number four, Blythewood Academy. Number five, refer to the IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Number six is back to home school with strict probation until the end of the first semester and also LARA. And then student number seven is back to the home school. And number eight is return to Blythewood Academy with strict probation.
Ms. Brill, seconded. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. For purposes of the record, the next agenda item is student appeal transfer. Chair will entertain a motion.
Chair making motion that we deny the appeal.
It's been moved by Mr. Manning. We deny the appeal, seconded by Ms. Specter. Any further discussion? Motion passes six one. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is new business action requested. Authorization for the superintendent to apply for available state, federal, foundation, and other special funded programs for fiscal year July 1, 14 through June 30, 2015. Dr. Hamm?
And Mr. Chairman, this is a routine authorization that's made annually so we can secure additional funding for the school district, and I'd like to entertain a motion that you provide the superintendent with the authority to apply for available state, federal, foundation, and and other special funded programs for FY 1415.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. The chair will entertain a motion.
Chair, make a motion that we approve the recommendation that was provided by the superintendent.
It's been moved by Mr. Manning, seconded by Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, on the new business, no action requested.
Yes, there is.
There are legislative updates. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the legislative session is drawing to a close, and we are very fortunate to have Mr. Scott Price, who you recognized earlier here, who is an expert on this subject, who is going to bring us up to date on what's happening with our state legislature.
He's a parent of a student in our district. I thought maybe he was here for an art student.
Former student. He was just bragging to Principal Schmidt about how well my son is doing at USC. Thanks to Richland Northeast. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to join you all this evening, and just for much more detail than you're ever going to want, it's in this packet, and I'll leave this right here with you. Bring you greetings from the State House, and the good news is, as Dr. Hamm pointed out, we're drawing to a close, and there's only five days left in the legislative session. The bad news is, there's only five days left, and a lot of stuff can happen in five days, so we have to remain vigilant, and I deeply appreciate the work that you all do at the local level, not only with your students and staff and administration, but also with your legislative delegation. That is very important, and you all do a marvelous job of keeping in touch with your delegation, and that is, it helps me at the State House, and it helps your students and your constituents, and I thank you for that. So where are we? A couple of things have already passed this year. First, that I'll mention that you all have probably already heard about, or you're getting some calls about, is the House Bill 3919 to get rid of the HSAAP or the exit exam. I know that we're starting to get calls from people who have some concerns about that, and I think we're going to see some word come from the State Department, if it's not already been sent out, about procedures that you as a district will need to take care of as part of that bill, part of its enactment. The, another thing I want to mention too is House Bill 4921, which is actually a joint resolution that has already been passed and signed by the governor for the current school year to allow districts to negotiate when it comes to retired teachers, non-terry retired teachers. Not every district needs that, but it's some flexibility that was put in place several years ago during the recession to help districts in building their budget, and several districts have indicated a need for that this year, so we worked with the General Assembly to get that passed. Another bill, Senate Bill 1194, has already passed, and it's a joint resolution also for the current school year to give school districts flexibility in dealing with the summer camp, reading camp requirements that are in the current budget. As you recall, I believe the legislature put one and a half million dollars in the current budget for summer reading camps, and it provides that, and that was, ended up obviously not being enough funding for that program, so districts are giving some flexibility on how to expedite or implement that program through that joint resolution. Another bill that's passed that is, it's been enrolled for ratification, another one that you all have heard a great deal about is Common Core State Standards Legislation. That has been enrolled, it's passed the House and the Senate. There was a compromise that was worked out on that plan, and will soon be going to the governor. Of course, we don't know right now how the governor's going to, whether she's going to sign it or veto it or not, but it is something that was, generated a lot of headlines and discussion, yard signs throughout the past year, and so we think this is a good compromise, and I'll talk about just a little bit more detail in a few minutes. Right now, the budget is currently being debated, it's passed the House, passed the Senate, the Senate's making changes, sent it back to the House, and they're going to debate it on the floor tomorrow morning, I believe. Basically, the budget is between the House and the Senate, there's really not a whole lot of difference, particularly as it relates to education funding. There was money and put in a hundred thirty-seven million in the EFA to close the gap and to increase the base student cost to two thousand one hundred twenty dollars. I would remind you that under law, that amount should be twenty-seven hundred forty-two dollars, so we're still some five hundred million off on where we should be under statute for the EFA. There was no additional money, this is a key thing, right now, there's no additional money in the base student cost with teacher salary step increases. With the addition in the last week by the BEA of, I think, like eighty-four million dollars recurring and non-recurring, we're hoping to be able to get some of that, some of that funding put towards teacher salary step increases, that'll help the districts out, because that's a mandate that you all have, and it's not being picked up by the state, and therefore you, as a ward and a district, have to maintain that under state law. Again, a lot of the details of this are in the packet. They did, both the House and the Senate adopted, in essence, the governor's funding plan that has some additional weightings for poverty, gift and talent, and English as a second language. It includes thirty million dollars for reading coaches, four and a half million dollars for summer reading camps, which is an increase from where we currently are, and some thirty million dollars for technology improvements. Getting on with the Common Core standards, again, the compromise that was reached and passed by the General Assembly is one that the School Boards Association was supportive of, and we were at the table in the discussions on that. It doesn't get rid of the Common Core, but it defines South Carolina's role in the Common Core State Standards. I know that in the next, I believe in the next year is when they will have a review between the State Board and the Education Oversight Committee to make recommendations on changes to the Common Core standards. I suspect one of the recommendations will make me to change the name to something like Palmetto State Standards. In any event, that review on the standards will occur in the next year. We did get, South Carolina did pull out of the Smarter Balance Consortium, which is the second part of the Common Core debate, and the issue that has to deal with the assessment piece. The Budget Control Board will be working with a panel of education advisors that have been put together to come up with an RFP, specifications for an RFP, to bring in a new, look at a new assessment for South Carolina. One of the other things that is still kind of floating around out there is the Read to Succeed Bill, Senate Bill 516. It is passed the Senate, it's over in the House. The House and the Senate basically have competing versions, although they are in the key components that are very similar. I suspect that the House tomorrow, it's on the calendar in the House to take that bill up, Senate Bill 516. I suspect, what I asked today, they already amended it to their version, they'll send it back over to the Senate, and they'll probably end up going to conference committee on the Read to Succeed Bill. And that's a pretty significant reading initiative for South Carolina, and they have, as I pointed out with the budget, there are several things in the budget, including money for summer reading camps and for reading coaches that goes toward the Read to Succeed Bill, so that's probably going to move along with the budget. And one of the things that I didn't mention about the budget, this is one of the first, probably the second time in the seventeen years that I've been lobbying over at the State House, that we may not go to a conference committee on the budget, because the legislature is done next Thursday, that's when the gavel falls, and usually they go to conference committee and hash out for about a week or so the differences, send it to the governor, she vetoes, they come back later in the session, or later in the summer, after a couple weeks and take up vetoes on the budget. It's looking like this year, there's a lot of discussion about them not doing that, that they're so close, they feel like they can work things out, concur, and go ahead and send it to the governor before the session ends. I mentioned the Read to Succeed Bill. Again, there's a lot of detail about that in your handout. The last thing that I want to mention is a, and it doesn't necessarily relate to Richland Two, but there's an important piece of legislation that's been moving throughout the session that we've been supportive of, and that's Senate Bill 940, and it concerns sales tax for construction in school districts, for school construction. This is a bill that we've been working on, and it started out as a bill to basically open up current statute to allow every school district to go to referendum, to ask the voters they want to approve a one-cent sales tax to cover costs for school repairs and building schools. Unfortunately, throughout the debate and the amendment process, it's been pared back a little bit to where it's not open to every district, but there is a list of probably about a dozen or so districts that are included. It would be my hope that we could go ahead and get this bill passed this year, and then come back in subsequent years and try to open it up for all districts. I think that there is a lot of potential with this, a lot of districts have great needs and can always be going to the taxpayers, as you, as you as board members know, for referenda, and it's something that would give school boards and school district additional tool for dealing with the many needs that we have in our, in our school districts, for school construction. One of the other things that I'll mention too, that's been, I've seen a couple of stories about it, and this is the Proposed Back to Basics in Education Act, which is, I guess, cursive writing and arithmetic multiplication tables, and requirement that students be able to master that by the fifth grade, and that bill has passed the House, that's House Bill 3905, it's over in the Senate, it's coming up actually tomorrow morning in the Senate Education Committee, and there is, there are two fiscal impact statements. One was like twenty million dollars, and they went back to the drawing board on that and came back, and it's now almost seven hundred thousand dollars fiscal impact, that's sort of what tied it up a little bit in the Senate, but at this point, that bill is coming up tomorrow morning in the Senate Education Committee. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have.
First off, Scott, let me thank you for coming and being here and giving us that thorough update. Appreciate that very much. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Anderson.
Scott, I want to thank you for coming, with Dr. Burgess. Dr. Burgess did a very good job, I think she had Women Secretaries doing it so excellent. But anyway, she did a great job in keeping us up to date on what was going on down at the Capitol, so I just appreciate you coming out and bringing us a packet and giving us an update.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Glad to do it.
We would like for you to continue to do that. When they come back in session.
That's your pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Other questions or comments on the board? Dr. Fleming? Scott, the Common Core legislation, is it, are they, are they working on, I know they're working on the assessment part, are they actually thinking about changing the standards? Are there standards acceptable to the State Board, and you know what I'm saying, or is it just, I'm just trying to figure out if it's just political football. I mean, this is a four set of standards up there, since I've been on this board, so I'm just, to me, standards are standards, and I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here.
I would guess, Dr. Fleming, that you'll not see too many alterations when they, when they come up for review in the next year. I think it's the end of the next school year is when they have to come together and review that. I don't think you'll see too many changes, but that was part of the compromise, is that we're going to, if everybody's so concerned about the Common Core State Standards we've adopted, then let's review them and see where we are.
See, my point is, is I was sort of ambivalent when this came out, but I have looked at it, and what they've done, and what I've always considered our curriculum is a mile wide and inch deep. Common Core has tried to make it deeper, and any effort in my part to do that, I'm for, I mean, as far as standards is concerned, because I think we, I think it has narrowed some of the stuff down and brought it into focus, the things that were important.
Well, there was a lot of good testimony throughout the session from district personnel that came in and talked about that, teachers, about how much better the Common Core standards are and how much more focused they are, and I think that we'll see that after we've been through a year of it and come into the review process.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Manning.
Scott, why are they moving forward with the RFP for the testing if we have a bill that's kind of got our standards up in the air?
Well, the standards aren't, I think that the testing part is one that, we were already part of a consortium that was developing, of states that was developing a testing component to go along hand-in-hand with the Common Core standards. I think that the way they're trying to do this is so that the testing, the new test, not the one under the consortium, the new one that they come up with, the RFP, will come later and where we mirror basically what our, what our standards are. I think there's some correlation there, that's the intent anyway.
Okay. Ms. Brill.
Hi. Enjoyed the day at the Capitol.
Thank you for being there.
Well, did a really nice job. What is the status of the legislation that was offered by Representative McKeachin and Douglas for single-member districts for Richland Two?
I haven't seen where that's gone anywhere. We had heard there was going to be a second bill filed, and I don't think that I've seen that filed yet. You know, we keep an eye out for local legislation that affects any district, and, because it can move very quickly if you're not careful, and sometimes tends to get filed without the knowledge of the board that it, and the district that it impacts. Not all the time, but sometimes, and that's unfortunate, and that particular bill has not gone, has not moved anywhere as far as I know, but it is a local bill, it can, these last few days, we'll have to really be vigilant.
Other questions, comments on the board? Scott, I know that millions of dollars are spent on textbook adoption, and so my question is, if we are adopting textbooks for next year and the year after, to the tunes of millions of dollars, and we make any, and I'm sure the textbooks have already been aligned on the national scale to the Common Core standards, and probably we have selected textbooks in the state based upon what we, where we thought we were going. With this possible change, what's going to happen in South Carolina as it relates to the millions of dollars in textbook adoptions if there's a significant deviation in terms of direction it stands to go?
Well, I hope, Mr. Chairman, that that is the kind of coordination that we can anticipate from the State Department of Education on the textbook adoption process, and in working with the EOC and with the legislature in coordinating that, because you can get, and I think, you can get into that kind of a situation if you don't have that coordination, and that's something that we look to the State Department to, to provide some leadership on.
I'm more concerned about it next year than I am right now.
Well, that'll be the process for next year, too.
Right. Thank you. Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is improvement to facilities at Ridgeview High School. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, over the last several years and on through this school year, the school district has made significant investments in improving the facilities at Ridgeview High School, and the purpose of the presentation this evening is to review some of those improvements that have already been completed, and then to bring the board up to date on a prioritized list of improvements, some of which are planned for implementation, and some of which would require additional funding to be implemented. That prioritized list was developed by Ridgeview High School and shared with us by their administrative team, and Dr. Matt Foxworth and I'll be making this presentation together. I'm going to kick it off by kind of giving you a high-level overview of some of the significant improvements that have been made in the last three years, starting with a new facility that we, the new addition to Ridgeview High School to accommodate the health services magnet, health sciences magnet that was added to that school. That was a large addition that not only includes the classrooms, but also some additional meeting spaces for students and outside, people who want to have, use a multipurpose room, that's located there. Another very valuable addition to the school was the addition of the rotunda off of their cafeteria, and I think that space has been useful beyond what they anticipated. Not only has it added space for meals, but it's proved to be a wonderful space for events and meetings, it's very attractive and gets used frequently. To make the entrance to this school more attractive, the fence was moved to be behind the Ridgeview sign and the Ridgeview blazer, and gates were added at the front of the school, so that's another enhancement that enhances the appearance, and it is amazing how much more prominent that sign is now that that fence has been moved. To the athletic facilities, there have been a number of upgrades. Entrance gates have been added and signage, shown in this slide. Next one, there have been concession stands and restrooms added near the softball and baseball fields. bleachers have been added, and along with that, some additional, if you can go on to the next slide, some additional. the next slide, some additional fences that were added a little bit after the initial addition of the, the bleachers that actually protect walls from going down that hill and keep children, for example, from going down the hill as well as a safety feature that was added a little bit later. One of the real concerns and an eyesore was the condition of these stands and, um, as you can see in the before picture, there was some major pitting in this, in the, uh, cement in, in these, um, stands and the seats really were in need of some work. So all that has been repaired. You can see in the after picture, um, there's no pitting, all of that's in good condition now. There's nice seats for people to sit on and actually there's been a lot of power washing and that area has been cleaned up considerably. And there's been major improvements to the area. Um, as the construction was going on, there was a lot of, um, dirt, debris, et cetera, that damaged some of the paint on some of these buildings, backstops, et cetera. Buildings have been repainted and look attractive now. Uh, grass is growing, things look better on that part of the building. If you'll go on to the next slide, there were concerns about the appearance of these hillsides. And, um, they are steep and they're covered with grass that keeps them from eroding. That's all been trimmed up and we've made some alternate arrangements for it to be more regularly maintained. It's not exactly beautiful, that grass, but does serve a, a major purpose. As the grass has been planted and the, um, uh, construction has been completed, grass is growing in, uh, one of the issues that's in that before slide was without the grass and, uh, without some of the vegetation that grew in, there was considerable erosion and we did have water that was coming up in various places. This particular example in the before slide shows where it came up in a batting cage. But as we've added, um, grass and it's grown in and the construction was completed, a lot of that drainage problem and erosion has been dealt with and things are better in that after picture. And we'll be coming back to the batting cages when we look at projects that are in the priority list that we got from the school and plans for completing some of those projects. That brings us to some of the things that we are planning on doing and that were on the prioritized list. You've got the full list in your packet in priority order. We've broken these out just to kind of break them down by timeline and I'm not going to go through every one of them since you've got them in your list, but I did want to mention a few of them. The first one is the batting cages. That was a real high priority item for their athletic teams. Uh, because the request, um, would, if we started building that during their seat, their, uh, baseball season, it would interfere with their games. We did decide to delay that until this, this summer, but we will be replacing those batting cages this summer. So that's something that's on the books to be completed. In addition to the batting cages, we're adding a storage building at each field. Uh, one of the priorities that is on an upcoming list is to enlarge, um, the dugout so that there'd be additional storage. And in the meantime, having these storage buildings may help alleviate the need, um, for larger dugouts and be a temporary measure that would help with, with that as well as other storage needs that are on. It's, it, it comes later on in the projected needs for the larger dugouts. It's, it's not on this slide, it's going to be on a later, it's coming up on a later slide.
So, but that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or top eight there?
The, the storage?
That should be a number there, shouldn't it?
The storage doesn't, didn't have a number specifically, it was just a benefit.
So, but it's going to cost us money, right? So then we need a number that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, top eight.
Um, another item that was a priority is the floor in the main gym. And I do want to say that while the request was for a new floor, we brought in a consultant on that and they recommended actually, and certainly be to their advantage to say you needed a whole new floor, but actually that wasn't what was needed, that what was needed was a repair and to refinish that floor. And that also is projected to be done in this upcoming, in, in this summer. Um, in the near term, we're going to move on to the next one. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these. In the near term, um, lighting one of the fields is something that's consistent with the other schools. So that's projected to be completed. the last two items on the list there, the expansion, I don't know which I had, but this is on athletic training room and, thank you, the expansion of the, the training room and the roll up doors for the weight rooms. We're trying to get estimates on that. At this point in time, we think that those may be relatively inexpensive to do and could be moved ahead, but we're going to have to wait until we get those. If there are more structural changes that make those more expensive, those may be things that actually would need to roll into some other source besides the eight percent funding to be completed. But we're anticipating at this point in time that those are things that might be able to be done. So these are things in these two slides that I just showed you that we think that probably we could be doing between this summer and next summer. We could link these items with the kind of funding that you typically provided in the eight percent funding. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Um, Matt Foxworth, who's going to talk to you about the things that are more expensive items typically we couldn't fund with those funds, but that are on their list of priorities. And she'll talk to you about tho- that list of priorities and why she thinks those items are important.
Mr. Chair, before Ms. Matt gets started, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Jelks Johnson.
Yes, um, is there a reason why we didn't get the presentation of the pictures prior to the board meeting? We just received just this sheet of paper so we could have been better prepared to ask all questions? Because it would have been very helpful had we had a copy of the presentation prior to this meeting. So is there a reason why we did not receive that? We only received just this sheet of paper? If someone could explain that for me, please?
Because we were just getting the pictures put together. It was a delay in getting the photos taken.
Did they get taken prior to the board meeting where you could have sent them to us?
We actually just got some of these finalized today.
Right, but my question was, were they taken prior to the seven o'clock board meeting?
Yes, they were.
Okay, in the future, if you could just make sure we get copies of presentations so we can be better prepared to ask questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Could you go back to that slide so I can get the numbers that's, these are the near term?
The immediate slides, one before that one?
No, I didn't get the number five. I have five. This is in the near future. You got five, six, eleven, twelve, sixteen, ten, and seventeen. So, the order that you have it, like you have five, six, eleven, twelve, sixteen, ten is not as important as five is what I'm reading. Is that how I'm reading that? See, it would be helpful for me as, we as a board have this, all we have is the, the original list. So if you could get me a copy of that, because I'm going to get confused, I already knew what I wanted to ask by studying this since we got this on Wednesday. Now you've thrown something different into the game that I have to go back and reevaluate because I had broken it down one way. Now you guys have broken it down another way.
We just broke, we broke these down by time and those are by priority order.
What's priority orders? The list that we have?
The list you have is in priority order.
One, two, three, four is in priority order and whose priority is that? Is that the?
That's the priority order we got from the school.
Okay.
And the numbers in the left column there represent that same priority order that's in your list.
Okay, but see in my list, my priority is the priority that they have here for us is number one, is, uh, covered batting cages. So what I'm asking?
Well, I can, good evening Chairman and the board and board members. If I may interject, one of the things that we have done, we took the opportunity to prioritize our athletic needs. And then when I had the opportunity to meet with a gentleman from MB Con, my team and I, we, um, got information from our teaching staff in terms of our programs and facilities, what do we need to make sure that we are prepared and ready for the future? So there were two lists that we prioritize. Um, if you could, if you would tell me, I like it all. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be honest. Um, so those are the things that when we looked at needs for the athletic needs and then for our facilities and program, I prioritize those things as well.
Okay.
Okay, um, I will talk about, um, the items that we are projecting that are not a part of the eight percent funding. One of the things, you had the opportunity to meet some of our track stars this evening. When you have record breaking athletes, I think you need a record breaking or magnificent sports complex center for those athletes to train in. So if you look at item number two, it says outfield house, but I would really, I think the word that should be there is a sports complex. When we think about training these individuals, um, I like to have locker rooms, weight rooms, a building that will house, um, offices for coaches. And that was one of the things that when I think about athletics, because in Ridgeview, we focus on success in all of the A's. Academically, we're sound, but then when it comes to our athletics and our activities and our arts program, I would like to be equally as sound and as successful. So I was dreaming, which is what MB Con told me to do, so I dream big for our students and our community. And so with that, number two, that is the sports complex center that we envision. If you look at number three, improve our main football field. We only have one field on which we play all of our outdoor sports with the exception of baseball and softball. As you can imagine, that field is used constantly, over and over. So, um, one of the solutions that we came up with is if we had artificial turf and then we wouldn't have to worry about the wear and the tear on that one field that we're use for most of our sports. If you look at item number eight, the weight room. One of the things that we would like to do with our weight room in the future is have a rehab or wellness area right now where we could put, um, treadmills or elliptical machines. And there's one other elliptical machine, treadmills, and bicycles, bicycles. We are not able to house those items in our weight room now because of the size of the weight room. And our small training room, I think Ridgeview was built in nineteen ninety-five, the train room does not meet the needs of all of our, uh, student athletes. And we, at this time, we only have, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Coach Gordon, one elliptical machine and not any, and one bike, not any treadmills, um, to rehab our athletes. So that's something we're dreaming. We would like to have a weight room that's big enough, large enough to meet the needs when we rehab our athletes. Um, item thirteen, Doctor Hamm has already discussed, expanded the dugout. And I think that was part of the summer of two thousand and fifteen budget. Item number seventeen, one of the things that we did ask for, um, in the MB Con list was to have roll up doors for the weight room. But if our weight room is going to be relocated to that sports complex, then I think we would need item number seventeen. Um, also, um, if you look at item number twenty, currently, um, I was under the impression or I was told that our home seating side is not at the current level district stated, stadium standard size. And so if we increase or expand the home sides, we will probably be able to get about twelve hundred or more students to attend some of our junior and varsity game. So if we could expand the home seating side of our, um, in our stands, that would bring us up to par, we believe. And I say twelve hundred, but actually if we expand it, it'll rise up to seventeen hundred. Fifteen hundred, thank you, Jack, it'll be at fifteen hundred. And right now, I think we're currently at about twelve hundred? A little less than twelve hundred, okay. So that would be a huge, um, investment or need improvement for us. When we look at our media center, one of the things that we know for twenty-first century learners is that they have to have a media center that is a active learning hub. And so we would like to redesign our media center to meet the needs of our students. And as part as the, as part as that upgrade for media center, that would include upgrading our broadcast studio. Because currently right now, we are able to, um, have live announcements, but our equipment in our studio does not afford us the opportunity to be able to record those announcements and put them on our blogs so that our students, our parents, and our community are informed. So that would be part of the upgrade of the media center that I would also like to request. And then when it comes to the new auditorium, I know, um, Chairman, you had the, um, pleasure of witnessing the Ridgeview Oklahoma production. That was over eighty-seven elementary, middle, high, and community members who were actively involved in that production. And we also had a live horse on the stage. But eighty-seven adults and a horse, the performance was spilling out into the audience. So our Ridgeview Arts Program has been phenomenal with reaching out to the community and I would love to, um, keep that partnership growing. And so with that, I would like to, it says a new auditorium, but if we could expand it, it would be the Ridgeview Arts Center. And it would be a collaboration of all of our visual and performing artists. And right now, our facilities does not allow for our, our dance instructor, our theater instructor, um, our visual arts. Our facility isn't such that they are together in one facility and they do a phenomenal job with recruiting, um, and making sure that the arts is important at Ridgeview. And I would love for that to continue, um, with our new Arts Center. Um, I will say, Chairman, board members, if you have any flexibility with helping us continue and improve upon our success in athletics, arts, activities, and academics, then I am humbly asking you and making the request for you to do so. And at this time, I'll take any questions and my sidekicks, my team members will join me.
Thank you very much, Doctor Foxworth. Uh, questions, comments in the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning?
Um, couple one, uh, very happy to see both an increase in size in the athletic training room and potentially one outside. Um, most of you know I was a former athletic trainer and I think that's a big need, a growing need that we have in our district in a lot of ways. And so I like your sports complex idea, particularly the way your school's laid out. I think there's a lot of needs there to move some of those key facilities closer. Um, also, I think the weight room's important. I think that, uh, you know, we increased our insurance premiums this year for athletic injuries and I think their proper conditioning is a big key to helping keep our athletes healthy and competitive on the athletic field. So I think that's a big need. One of the things, you know, when we did, uh, Richland Northeast High School, one of the things I kept asking for was some architectural sort of drawings. I, I, I'm a visual person and I think a lot of people are. And it's one thing to sort of see all these things on paper, it's another sometimes to sort of picture what it looks like. And I think that might help, um, get some buy-in from, you know, community and others when they can sort of see where we're going. Cause sometimes these things do take, you know, two, three years depending on the, the funding sources. And I think it helps kind of keep everybody focused on where we're going and what the outcome is. Um, you, you know, the other thing, I, I know we have that expansive cement for the bleachers, I think it looked good cleaned up, but I'm sort of picturing maybe some color or something there. I mean, that's a, a great place where maybe some, I don't know whether it's stain or paint or what, you know, works with something like that. Um, I think the hill, I know that grass is there and we're maintaining it, but I think that could be improved on. And, uh, you know, there's lots of areas that sort of have that difference in, uh, grade and there's lots of ways to deal with that with, um, and so I'd like to see some improvements in, in that area as well.
Okay.
So I, but, but I am wholly, obviously very behind, uh, this project and what we can do to work together to, to get you there.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Doctor Elkes Johnson?
Well, Mr. Manning hit on one of the questions I was wanting to have. But the other one is, we didn't mention anything about the halls being hot or cold. Is that part of the projection here in the plan?
I will say that this summer, we are having a part that is going to help us with the halls. Um, there is a cooling tower part that's going to be replaced this summer and that will help us tremendously with HVAC issues.
Thank you. Other questions and comments in the board? Thank you. Other questions or comments on the board? Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Chair. I guess I'm still confused because I studied this so, and then I get something else thrown at me tonight. I'm not really sure, um, where I'm going with all of this. And two, I'm not quite sure where you're going with the sports complex. That sounds sort of elaborate to me. And so I would think that I would say, as Mr. Manning said, I'm visual.
Yes.
To me, a sports complex turns me on, because we don't have a sports complex anywhere. I visualize something huge and very expensive. So bring me back in on that, because I think I'm, I'm too far out on the sports complex. What are you envision, when you say that?
Well, I think just that we talked about, and Coach Gordon, you can come up here and add some more details. But one of the things that we focus is having a central building where our locker rooms for our athletes are centrally located, our weight room, all of the things that our athletes will need will be housed in one building.
Okay, and right now, how is it housed?
Come to the mic, come to the mic, please.
Uh, in various places throughout the school building, um, particularly with the fact that now we've added the addition, you know, with the, with the new, um, M-Wing. We have the weight room there, uh, and then, of course, our gym facility, our locker rooms are through there, our weight room, and our training room's on the opposite hall. So everything that we have, I mean, is, is kind of sporadically throughout the, the building. And what we were looking at more was the concept of putting more things, I guess the way to say it, under one roof in one area, uh, to try to, you know, have better, uh, well, collaboration, if, if for one thing, between, you know, our, our athletic programs, our training programs, our physical education programs, um, and, and then, you know, also, uh, to be able to better handle and maintain those facilities, um, being in that, in, in that one area, I guess is a way to say it. And of course, I mean, I, I, I'd be lying if I didn't say we wanted, so we, we, we'd hopefully be, to upgrade some of that too, to bring it to a certain standard of quality of equipment that we felt like would, would, uh, you know, better help our athletes and our, our school.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Because of the letter that we got from one of the parents, um, I want to see what, what's going on here and get to the bottom of it. Because in the letter, it was stated that the board had addressed this, board members were aware of it, which I was not aware of any of these things. The only thing that I was made aware of was when some parents sent emails and letters concerning debris and glass during prior to some ball function that was going on. So my thing tonight, and my response back was, we would discuss this tonight in order for me to have a good understanding as to where we are, what is needed immediately within the next twelve months at the school, and then take it from there in steps. That's how we revitalized Northeast. We took it in steps. I think it was at what, three, it was in three phases? Three phases. So what I'm looking...
Three different eight percent.
Three different eight, right. What I want from you guys is not something up on the board that I gotta scramble and make notes and this, that, and the other. I want you to bring me back the top ten things that have, as Mr. Jackson would say, of a sense of urgency to your school, your parents, your SIC, and all of those people. So that it's not a reflection on me as a board member that we are ignoring Ridgeview High School, because that is not the fact.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
I would like that to come before me. I don't know about the other board members, but I think we need the top ten, ten things in working in phases, because some of these things are, will probably call for a bond referendum, because we, we just don't have the money for it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Elkes Johnson?
Yes, I was going to say, since I had the opportunity to work at Ridgeview, and I did share some of these same concerns that you're expressing, Ms. Mack, to several of my board, um, colleagues. But what I would suggest is the board members not be afraid to go out to the school and get to visit it yourself instead of having someone bring pictures or paper. Step out as a board member and go visit the school. So I opened up that door to my colleagues to go and visit the school. I worked there for six years, so I don't need a visit, I know exactly what they're sharing before us. So that's what I proposed to my colleagues this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Elkes Johnson. And I think we could probably need to do both. I think taking a visit is, is what's on the table as an invitation. Getting a prioritized list of what the school thinks is most important, they need to be, have done right away, is probably a second piece from, from that. Because some of the things you're gonna see in the visit probably won't be done right away, and there'd be others that can be done right away. But we need to figure out what things need to be done right away and come up with a plan for those things that will take a little bit longer. So we'll do both. Uh, Ms. Specter?
One thing I would like to see, when we did the renovations at Ridgeview, were any of these concerns brought up during that time?
Well, Ms. Mack wasn't principal at that time, so I doubt that she can respond to that.
Miss Specter, we can't hear you very good down here.
Talking to Mike, they can't hear you.
I'm trying to find out if it was a money issue then, or is it the lack of space building this, um, these type of facilities? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Maybe someone from the district can answer that, um, Dr. Ham, Mr. Carter. Question is, when the, and I'm assuming you're talking about the health sciences and the rotunda?
Yeah, when we did the renovations.
Are any of the issues that Ms. Mack is facing now as a current principal on that list of things that were identified as concerns and needs when that was done under Dr. Martin's, um, principalship? That's the question.
Uh, the short answer is no, sir, they were not identified. It only, when we started working with, beginning of this year, we began to identify these things.
Thank you.
But these are things that just didn't occur under the new principal leadership. These are things that have been there for years, correct? It just wasn't brought to the attention of the last principal. Is that what I hear you saying?
I'm saying there was no request from the last principal to do these things.
But the needs and concerns were still there?
Oh, I would say they weren't, but...
Okay, that's what I want.
Generally try to do what the principal asked us to do.
Right, that's what I want to be clear on.
Thank you very much. Other questions, comments on the board?
One more question, Mr. Chair, that I want to clear up. An elected official responded to Aaron's letter, um, stating about the discretionary funds that each school is allocated. Can you tell me what you guys, how much did you get in discretionary funds for this current school year?
I can tell you, um, not the exact amount, but I would like to say that it was a little close to two hundred thousand.
Can you tell me what you guys, how you dispersed that?
Um, in terms of, there were things that we have in needs for, you know, our Blazer Academy. So we make sure that we provide tutoring for ninth graders, they have tutoring, um, Monday through Thursday. So there were funds that went towards that. Funds that, um, I could use to help with some of the improvement in-house at Ridgeview for our athletic, um, programs in terms of, we didn't have simple things such as signage. And so in terms of, um, where you enter the, the, um, campus, where the softball field was, where the baseball field was, where the gymnasium, so there, you know, some of that fin, funding went to assist with, um, athletic needs. Um, in terms of, let me, uh, think, copier, uh, there are copier, I'm looking at Mr. C., because we spent, pardon me, come a little closer? Okay, traffic control, um, signage?
I, I guess the point is that nothing was really spent on infrastructural equipment needs, is, is, I think what I'm hearing you saying, from that eight, from that, um, uh, those, those funds, the discretionary money. It was for...
Well, let me say, because I know our athletic, uh, Gordon, he needs to come and talk about, because he spent his budget as well as then I provided additional funds.
The athletic eight percent money that we've been receiving the last three or four years, sorry, maybe it's four or five years now, we have utilized that each, each year, um, to address major pieces of equipment, for all of our sports, to try to upgrade something at least for each sport, or in some cases, uh, some things like, for example, this past year, we had to replace, we used some of that money to replace our hurdles for our track team, uh, because they've been there since the school opened, okay? So they were desperate. Same way, the year before, we replaced a pole vault pit, uh, a year before that, a high jump pit. We've also, um, you know, used that, um, to, you know, maintain, as we've all been hearing lately, uh, um, our, our football helmet inventory and, and, and deal, dealing with, uh, um, you know, those types of things. In addition to that, major pieces of equipment, training equipment, things of that nature, uh, for, uh, particular sports. And some of it has been, um, uh, used, um, in, in some cases for, uh, equipment like we may add into our athletic training room facilities, uh, things of, uh, of that nature. So we try to prioritize the things that, for lack of a better way of saying this, from an athletics budget, is that bigger ticket item, um, that you're, you're not gonna really, you know, make that money from selling tickets at a football game.
Right.
Okay, so, uh, those are things that we've tried to do, that's the things that we are continuing to do and planning on doing. And, uh, I, I do want to say this, um, when I came here in two thousand and six as the athletic director, there were a lot of things, um, that, you know, we, we initially looked at that seemed like, um, that, that there used to be a movie called They Said It Couldn't Be Done, and that was about Mount Rushmore and all that, those things happening. Well, um, and, and, and through the, really, truly through the help of, you know, Mr. Carter, Mr. Potowski, and other people that have listened and have tried to look as we can go, we have made significant improvements to the facilities, okay? It is a journey, we realize that, and, uh, and I feel like at this point in time that, uh, we are on the same path on that journey. And we might disagree from time to time, you know, what is a, maybe our priority, priority, uh, from a standpoint of, of funding, and, and, and we have to all understand that and work together, and I feel like we're on that page. But, um, I mean, we've, we've used some of these things to upgrade the, uh, like the baseball field, the bat, the, the, um, excuse me, the backstop, uh, went from the, we went from a, a wire backstop to a, a brick backstop with netting and so forth, and, uh, so we, we've done that. Like I said, we've upgraded all the outside equipment right now. We've used that to help also upgrade our, um, uh, our football equipment, sleds and things of that nature. We're significantly out of date and in some cases, very dangerous. But now we, we, we've done those things. So I feel like we're, we're, we're trying to continually make those improvements, and I think we're going to continue to try to make those improvements. And, um, and, and again, we met today, actually, uh, I met today, and, and Mr. Gooch, uh, was out with us, uh, and, uh, we, we met today about, uh, batting cages, uh, for both softball and baseball. And we're getting some, uh, some drawings done and some pricing done for those things, and that's on, on the, on the line for this summer. So, um, we're working on it. Obviously, we see things, uh, that we'd like to see be the greatest they can be at Ridgeview. And, uh, I applaud the fact that our, our principal has come in with that type of attitude, that we want to make Ridgeview the best as, as it can be. And it, it's not to say that that wasn't the, the, the case before, okay? Uh, I think as, as we could, we've tried to make these upgrades. And, um, and again, as you mentioned, Ms. Anderson, the, the funding, uh, sometimes is, it, it may not be there right then, okay? But it doesn't mean that, that, that it's, it's not a look or attempt at how we can do it other ways. We have a very, uh, wonderful community from a perspective of, they want the best for Ridgeview too. So, um, and we've been very appreciative of their listening ear, uh, and, uh, and, and them helping us. Honestly, uh, to, to see some things that maybe each day as we go by and see it, they can see it a different way from a standpoint of, maybe we can improve some, some of these other areas. So, um, uh, I, I think we're all working on the right direction, and I do appreciate the opportunity to stand up here and say this to y'all tonight. And I do think that we can continue to improve what we have, okay?
I appreciate that, because the, the letter that I received, and then the, the comments from some of our county council people, I took it as insinuating that you were not receiving your discretionary funds. So I wanted to make that very clear in public, that you do receive your funds, and it's up to the principal's discretion as to how you disperse those funds. So again, as we, we journeyed through Northeast, which was the second oldest school in the district, we went through phases with that. And I think that I can assure you guys, as a board, on my behalf, that we will do the same with Ridgeview. Each school has to wait the turn, but important things come first. And so I would like to see a phase process and get those urgent, sense of urgency things done, and then go with our phases and see where the money is coming from, if it's gonna be a bond referendum or whatever. But I feel your parents, your, your faculty, your pain, because I felt the pain because of Northeast. And I'm very proud of the, the new look that Northeast have. And I want Ridgeview to have that same feeling that Northeast, and I don't want people comparing, thinking that we're doing favor in one school over the other.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Other comments or questions on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Fleming?
Got a lot of friends standing up there, and, uh, and, uh, I just want to thank y'all for being here. I think you've asked for some reasonable things except for the field house. I really, I don't see any problem, but, uh, and the reason is, is not because maybe we can't do it, I don't know where you can put it. I mean, we, this, this has been a problem at Ridgeview since, I was, I got elected to board November before YOOP in August. I stood down there with Colonel Hans as I watched the, the hill come down into the softball field when it rained. I mean, I've been there. Russ didn't know if he could play a game down there the first time. He didn't know if his field would be dry. I've been there, I know, I, I mean, you know, I just see the problems you guys have, is, and I understand it. And two years ago, I talked with Dr. uh, Mr. Carter, I said, there's only one way to make that field work out there. Behind, when you got one field, there's only one way to make that work. And so we know that. And I want to thank Dr. Ham for, literally, I mean, I did, I did understand that you have some things you would like to get done this summer, and I think that was important, those things are important, and then the things we may have to do next year. You know, thank you for being here, and, uh, thank you for your presentations. And, and I think this board will work diligently to see if we, what we can do, because again, it's your turn.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Other questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Manning?
I do want to make one comment, somebody, um, I know I, I referenced Rich and Northeast, but I think I've seen it in writing somewhere that, you know, maybe there's this idea of compare Ridgeview to Rich and Northeast. You know, I want to make sure that you guys have what you need, you know, not necessarily comparing against another school, but what is it that you need to be successful? I think you've outlined and said, um, some of those things. So we certainly want equity, but, you know, I don't want to be in a situation where it's like, well, just because they have it, you know, we want, I want to make sure it is the right fit and exactly what you need, not just to, to look at another school, because what works for one may not be what works for the other. And, and I know, um, I've heard a couple times, the, uh, the field house or the sports complex. I know Richland One has done a lot of that in their facilities, where they have sort of adjunct training rooms or other facilities. You have quite a, a large expanse, and I think because of just the, um, the lay of the land, it, it's a little bit different than some of our other schools, even though they may have a lot of space. But going down that hill, and, um, as you said, the spread out facilities, I know, um, you know, in my former life, athletes are carrying their, you know, their shoes throughout the school, and the facility folks are complaining about the mud and the dirt and everything else, you know, as they traipse through to do their normal activities. So I want to make sure we give that a fair shake and, and really look at that, um, and where it could fit, so.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Other questions, comments on the board? Question, Dr. Mack, um, the auxiliary gym, how is it used and what's its condition? And is it a possibility, as we talked about, a, a large, an enlarged training facility that there's a space there, or is it so important to whatever use it is that it could not be shared or created into a more up-to-date, equipped, training facility? Anyone, I don't mean to put you in about any, or your AD.
I'd like to say yes, but I don't know if Jack would agree with me.
Go ahead, I want to hear from you guys.
Can you come, um, I will say this, one of the things that we've spoken about, my team and I, we talked about, you know, this year, we had our first, um, annual inaugural Bojangles Bash, and we would love to grow that, um, basketball tournament. So I would love to entertain the idea of expanding our auxiliary gym, um, so that we could have more seedings. I do know that, um, one of the things that we've asked for is to get additional goals in the auxiliary gym. But I think with, um, if we got additional seating, it wouldn't be more than, was it two hundred? The capacity to seat only two hundred when we?
Yeah, I see.
See if we can get some seating on the side. The reason we can only put two instead of four is because one wall's got some ventilation and some doors on... The reason we can only put two instead of four is because one wall's got some ventilation and some doors on it. We can do it on the opposite wall, it wouldn't be safe to put the other two up. So, we've talked to them about that. We will do, at least in our plan, the things I intend to fund right away with some money we found and some savings other places, stuff we can do quickly this summer, no requiring any design.
Other non-a- non-athletic issues, Mr. C, sir, Mr. Upchurch, I didn't see a lot of that on the list. Are there other, and also, Dr. Mack, are there other issues that are, are of concern from a non-athletic perspective that need attention?
I know one of the things, uh, Mr. C, I don't want to steal your thunder, but one of the things that we'd like to do is when you look at some of our, uh, career and technology education classrooms on C-Hall, the lighting is extremely dim, but my understanding is that, um, Jack and George, that we're gonna have those rooms, that the lighting will be corrected or fixed this summer. Um, so that was one of our issues or concern, and we are certainly glad that we have this youth career connect grant. Um, but with that, you know, adding an additional engineering and computer science, um, classroom, we're going to have to, and Jack and George have been wonderful with saying, whatever we need to do to redesign some of our classrooms to meet the needs of the, that smaller learning community, that they will work with us.
Is that coming in the fall?
Yes, but the work will be done this summer.
Right, that's what I was asking.
So, yes, it will be here this fall, but they have graciously said, whatever we need, they're willing to work and make sure that it happens and our students are ready for that, um, new smaller learning community.
Mr. Manning.
I want to ask one question because I, I think this brings up a point because I, I seem to remember something about the lighting being talked about before and that we're talking about it again. I don't know if it's the same thing or something different, but, uh, one of the things that, that worked well, uh, at least for me, and I think the rest of the board, we kind of got things ramped up at Rich and Northeast. We got fairly frequent updates on where things were, and then as we went into next phases, you know, we had those reports. I would like to see this kind of be a, a regular, um, thing on our, item on our agenda. We have some really near-term items that are going in, so I think it's appropriate to have this more frequently and just talk about that progress so we don't get caught by any issues. And then we come up to the beginning of the school year and find out maybe something happened that we couldn't get it done or, or whatever. Um, so, and I know that's kind of directed, Debbie, at you, you know, the, the rest of the group up here to make sure we get that.
One other thing, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkes Johnson.
You made a great point about asking Ms. Mack if there are any academic concerns, and it just brought something to my attention. I know we don't have the gear up money.
Right.
That we normally have with the Blazer Academy and helping the ninth graders. And I would love to see us give mon- money back to the schools and not only Ridgeview, but to all the schools with, um, the ninth grade academy. Because I know during my tenure at Ridgeview High School, we had an opportunity to decrease our, um, freshman retention. So, I think that's very important that Ms. Mack use discretionary funds for other items and we be able to help fund the Blazer Academy. So, thank you for that question.
Other questions or comments on the board? It is, in my opinion, uh, not a, just a conversational discussion that we are bantering about, Ms. Mack. Um, but it is an issue that's been on the board's agenda for, uh, some time. And it's important for us to make sure that you and Ridgeview, in fact, get what you need, not just what you need, but in order to be competitive in every way. And that's why I asked for non-athletic needs. I would agree with Ms. Anderson. I, I think that we really want to hear from you and your administrative team that says, yes, we sign off on the top ten. Are there some that may not have made the top ten that we need to add to the top ten? And then this board will have to do for Ridgeview the same thing it did with Rich and Northeast, and that is to consider eight percent money, that is to consider reserve money, and maybe lastly, consider bond money. And I've said that privately, but I'll say it publicly tonight because if we don't pass a bond in two thousand and sixteen, I don't want Ridgeview High School to be held hostage in hopes and anticipation that taxpayers will pass a bond bill that will, your future will be dependent upon it, and I don't want that to happen. So, we need to become creative, just as we were with Rich and Northeast, we need to do the same thing in your situation. So, it's important for you to, to help us understand what your needs are. And then, Jack, we need to get some dollars assigned to those needs so we can then have a, a more fruitful discussion about what it's gonna cost. And then, Dr. Miley, we'll talk, have conversations about where the money's gonna come from i- in that order. Other questions or comments on the board? And now, thank you very much, Dr. Mack and your staff.
Thank you.
I'm assuming someone from the district staff will, will, will get with the folks from Ridgeview and, and will, will come back to our next board meeting with that prioritization and also remind you the, of the invitation that was extended earlier, that if you haven't had a chance to go by and visit lately, to, to do that as well. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda will be the agenda items for our June tenth board meeting at Polo, back here at Polo Road Elementary. Dr. Ham.
We will have a, at that point in time, we will have had our meeting with county council regarding our budget, so there'll be a budget update. Uh, we'll have a preview for our summer staff development programs, an overview of the summer programming that we'll be offering for students this summer, a report on the naming of the new student learning facility, and then also we'll be bringing you the policy regarding approving, filling administrative vacancies.
Thank you. Are there any other items from the board that you'd like to add to next board meeting's agenda or a future board meeting agenda? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our public participation part two. Uh, no one signed up. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you have an opportunity to do so at this time. Please come to the mic. If you would state your name and address for the record and be mindful that you have three minutes. I'm gonna have to put you on the clock, so don't mean to be rude when I call time.
I don't need to be on the clock, I'm good, I'm good. I don't want to put my address on record either. But I'm Amelia Mackey, the school improvement council chair at Ridgeview. I'm also the secretary of the school improvement council. Half of the things I was gonna talk about, you all have addressed, I want to say thank you. Um, the tenor tonight, I appreciate, um, the concerns that were raised tonight. I just want to make a couple of sticking points. Um, Dr. Ham, you, you mentioned some things that were expensive that we can afford to get done, and that Ms. Mack wants us to bring forth more expensive items regardless of money, I'm glad to hear. Uh, Mr. Jackson, that you were talking about creatively funding Ridgeview to give us what we need, uh, and not have to be relegated to what's inexpensive and what's expensive and what's elaborate. There are lots of beautiful schools in this district that are elaborate. They are beautiful, they were funded some sort of way, and I appreciate that, and I hope we'll have the same consideration. Want to make a clarification, the RNE Ridgeview thing, we've never made that comparison. I've been a member of SIC for four years, um, I have been an officer for the last three years, and since my seniors freshman year, I have been asking for things. Parents have been sending emails, parents have been calling, parents have expressed concerns. These concerns didn't develop tonight. We've been expressing concerns and people are frustrated. Our kids get teased and taunted when other folks come, and yes, the grounds are better than they were relatively speaking. Our kids get teased and taunted when people talk about what our grounds look like, they are better than they were, but that's a relative term. Um, four years ago, at my first SIC meeting, when I had concerns about the way the school looked with, with our grounds, um, our leadership at that time said that, um, if RNE has it, then you can feel free to ask for it. If Ridgeview does not have it, if RNE does not have it, then Ridgeview can ask for it. It's not a myth, that's what we've been told for the last, well, starting four years ago, two years ago. Not so much the case this year. We've been given, uh, the autonomy to share and express our concerns, but that wasn't a myth. We were actually told that if Richland Northeast didn't have it, then we shouldn't ask for it. I'm not sure where that comparison came from, but I wanted to make that distinction, and that was told from leadership, and I have our SIC minutes to account for that. I'm glad to hear that you all are willing to help us at Ridgeview. Parents are frustrated, this is not something new, um, and we are academically, scholastically on point. My kids, I have one child that is going to college, he's playing football on an academic scholarship. My other child is an A honor roll student, awesome athletic found, uh, academic foundation at Ridgeview. We just want to have parity in other areas as compares to other high schools and not let inexpensive, terms like inexpensive and expensive be a barrier to giving us what our kids need. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, just point a clarification, I just want to, the Rich and Northeast comparison, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to explain that.
Not just because one has it or doesn't have it.
I appreciate that, but I wanted to explain that to you and not think that we were comparing ourselves to RNE. That's actually what we were told in SIC meetings, I can account for three years for sure.
We were told that if long as we were on a parity level with RNE, then we were good. I'm not sure why Ridgeview and RNE are, are compared. I, I think that every school is unique and every school should be the very best. RNE is beautiful. Do I think they probably still have room to go? Sure, sure, sure. But it is absolutely beautiful, but I don't want to compare ourselves to RNE. I want to be the very best Ridgeview that we can be, and congratulations for all that they've gotten. But I think that every school should strive for its own level of excellence, but that's something that we were actually formally told. And SIC, I didn't want you to think that was a myth.
Thank you.
Yeah, but thank you all for your tenor tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Mackey, any other, uh, persons who would like to address the board at the time? If not, next on our agenda, uh, is that the chair will entertain a motion to be adjourned.
So moved.
And second, thank you very much for your presence tonight, this meeting is adjourned.